eleven oh nine B Bayou Road Lamar, Texas. This location will be open to the public and the meeting will be broadcast at this location on channel sixteen and via YouTube. The council will meet for the purposes of considering the following agenda. The meeting has been called to order. Uh Kiara, can we have a roll call please?
Councilmember District A.
Present.
Councilmember District B.
Present.
Councilmember District C.
Present.
Councilmember District D, it looks like is not with us, and there.
Present. Uh thank you, Kiara. Uh we asked already the Lord's blessing on this meeting, uh these meetings this morning. Uh well, earlier this afternoon, and certainly we have already said the pledge, we will say. Uh the pledge and the invocation again in a special presentation. Uh for our regular scheduled meeting tonight, so let's move now to item four. Citizens' participation limited to three minutes per person. Comments from the public will be uh heard at this time. Any person with city-related business who has signed up to speak to council. May speak, uh limited to three minutes. If you wish to speak, give the mayor or the presiding officer your full legal name, address, and item you wish to speak about. Applies with Texas Open Meeting Act, the city may not deliberate on comments. Personal attacks will not be allowed, and personnel matters should be addressed to the city manager during normal business hours. Press star six to mute and unmute yourself if you are participating via telephone. Uh if you're participating via. Uh Zoom, a smartphone, tablet, or computer. You may press the microphone icon in the lower portion of your screen to speak. Uh if you are participating in person, you may approach the podium to my left and to your right. Uh you may give uh me your name, address, uh and you will be allowed to speak. Are there any persons online wishing to speak?
No.
Uh Carrie, do we have any person signed up? Wishing to speak? And we'll move past this to item uh five. New business items presented to council for discussion and possible action five one. Utility rates discussion regarding updating citywide utility rates. Uh we will turn this over to our city manager, Mr. Garcia. Uh but before we do, if you happen to see council moving in and out, we are trying to. Uh eat as well as work at the same time, so. Uh we will definitely make sure that we are cognizant of that, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh Mayor Protem Council. Uh thank you for giving us the opportunity. I have asked uh our uh consultant to join us. Uh Mr. JP from Waterworth. JP, as you load the presentation. Uh if you don't mind, same way we did it on Thursday evening, we could share the screen. And Mayor, i- if it's okay by you, if I can present from the actual podium. Thank you. So while we get everything pulled up, I want to just take us through, I guess, where we've been. Uh several meetings from now, we've established and looked at where we are with our utility rates and where we need to be. Uh to address some of our shortfalls and the fact of how far removed we were from where we needed to be. Uh we also had several community meetings where we discussed our capital improvements. Uh we also had a community workshop which we held this past Thursday in this very room at six. We've incorporated some of the suggestions from that meeting uh to discuss with uh you tonight. So if we can, we're gonna go through this presentation. All right, JP, next slide. So one thing we talked about was there not necessarily being a cushion or anything else. We need to worry about just breaking even. All right, that is the most important part to us right now. It's a break even. All right, make sure that our operating costs are are being covered. Next slide. Right now, present day, since October first, we are running at a deficit of roughly six thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars per day. All right, so this is the importance of why we're here today. What are we talking about? If you accumulate that and multiply that number by ninety days, the deficit by January first will be close to six hundred and sixteen thousand five hundred. Next slide, please. That is a sense of urgency. That's where we've uh gotten to this point. This slide represents the two lines. The operating expenses, that's every single staff person. Uh any single vehicle that we have, materials, what have you. All those operating uh expenses are shaded in the lighter shade of blue. While the purchased water or the amount of water that we purchased to use is uh shown in the darker shade of blue. You notice right now, we're roughly at about five to five point two million dollars. This current fiscal year, we are in fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. So that's where we stand now. Next slide, please. Good thing is, sorry, if you can go, there we go. All right, good thing about our debt situation is currently our debt is diminishing and it's missing very quickly. We're in much better shape than probably most cities are on their utility side. Currently, we are peaking this year. Uh we'll be peaking at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of debt payment. Then it tragically drops for future years, drops to fifty thousand, then approximately twenty-five thousand, and it tails off. We'll have zero debt on the books from the utility side as of twenty twenty-nine. Next slide. If any point anybody has a question, please, by all means, counsel, anybody, please. Let me turn, I guess, this way. I apologize and then be given right by my back. Uh next slide, please. I'm sorry, here. So when you combine the uh the the current amount of debt with the cost of water and our operating costs. That's how we get to the five point two that we must break even at now. Okay? Next slide, please. So this is where our deficits, if we stay where we are now and do nothing. The annual deficit will continue being two point five until twenty twenty-seven, where roughly it it jumps to two point seven. And then in twenty thirty-two, over the course of the next ten years, it will climb to three point two. Okay, that's that's our uh separation where we are now. Next slide. Again, this is the sense of urgency. This is what got us to this point. That was a brief synopsis of what we need to do, what the differences and what the state of what we have. All right, next slide. The one-year plan to break even, if we were to do this, just to break even. Okay, we're not talking about anything else, just to break even, we need to make up whatever that difference is shown in that arrow. Okay, that's that's what that difference represents, and that's what we're gonna talk to you as part of uh these actual rates for our utilities. All right, next slide. Currently, there are thirteen different re uh uh groups that are listed as part of our. Uh water contortion, our our region through the Gulf Coast Water Authority. Of those, we rank as number four, being the fourth lowest. Uh two of those that are above us are actually their own uh utility districts. Texas City is lower than us, but everybody else on here is higher and. Have almost all uh said that they will be raising their rates as well. With over the course of next year with the fact that water is gonna cost us all more money. Um we have not had any substantial increase since twenty eleven. Which is a big reason of how we got here, right? And it's very important that we understand that. A lot's happened since twenty eleven and uh. We are a little bit behind when it comes to those things. Nobody wants to be at at the highest point. But also, uh it it is fair to say that we are also near the bottom. Next slide. Now let's talk about affordability, and I'm gonna take over the first slide, and I'm gonna turn it over to uh JP. So what are we talking when we talk about affordability, all right? What we're not talking about is I think my bill is expensive and I don't want to pay so much for water, right? That's not what affordability is. Or that. That's an emotion. What we're really talking about is, is there an actual cost burden and will I struggle to pay my bill? That's the real question that that that's in mind, okay? To state that, what we need to find out is, well, what does this equate to? To the average, or in this case, let's be honest, probably the below-average socioeconomic group that we probably have as constituents that we all serve. Next slide. This is the group we're talking about, those folks that are in the fixed low income or or a single income earning minimum wage. All right, the rationale we have about if the income is low, then it's probably consumption will be low as well. So it's very, that's a correlation that 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 we're showing here. If usage or if uh. Ability to afford as low, there's a likelihood that consumption will also be low as well. Okay? Next slide. Now let's talk about financial burden. Um please, JP, this is uh your section here.
Okay, thank you, and uh thank you, Mayor and Council for inviting me here today. So we did a uh a very high-level analysis. Uh on the affordability. Or as uh it was just put a moment ago on whether there's a cost burden. And we we looked at this from a a community perspective, so it's a high level, think of it as a flyover. Uh this was not a deep dive uh analysis of individual households and their and their uh specific situations. And we looked at three metrics. On how we might measure if there's a cost burden. So the first one is called the affordability burden. And it is based on how many hours. One must work at minimum wage. Uh in order to pay for one's uh water bill. So minimum wage in Texas is seven and a quarter dollars an hour. And so if one needs to work six hours. In a month at minimum wage in order to pay for the water bill, that might be considered a low burden. If it's between six and ten hours. So at ten hours, ten hours at seven and a quarter, that's that's seventy-two dollars and fifty cents. So at that level, the um the cost of the water bill might be considered a mild burden. And then anything above ten hours is that is is considered a higher burden. The second metric we looked at, the called the financial burden. So instead of looking at how. A water bill might relate to minimum wage, in this case, we're relating it to what is called. The lowest quintile income. So if you take the. Uh the segment of the of the community who are at the the bottom fifth, so the twenty percent. Of households who have the lowest income as is recorded in the census data. And and what we do is we take the average of that group, so the average household income for the bottom twenty percent. And in this case, in the city of Lamarck, it's twelve thousand dollars and some change. And. So what we do is we look at to see what percentage. Of that household income, so this is an annual income. Uh what percentage of that income? Is uh the cost of the water bill for the year? And in this case, the way the metric works is if it's two percent or less, it's considered a low burden. If it's between two and four percent, it's considered a mild burden, and if it's. Four percent or higher. It's considered a higher burden. And the third one, which was developed by the EPA uh some several decades ago, it's called the residential indicator. And that one, instead of being based on the lowest quintile income, it's based on the median household income. So that's the income of the household that is exactly in the middle of the pack. Uh with all the households to its left earning less than fifty thousand and all the households to its right earning more. Within fifty thousand. And in this case. The way the metric works is it's considered a low burden if the annual cost of water is under one percent. Uh of of that figure of the fifty thousand. If it's between one and two percent, that's considered a mild burden, and anything two percent or higher is considered a higher burden. So these are uh these are value um statements. Uh there's no national standard for this and. Um and again, this is looking at. The cost burden from a community perspective, not individual households. Every community. Despite if their waters considered to be affordable or not, every community will have. Households who struggle to pay their bills. And there's other things we can do with those, you know, to help those folks. So let me just get my annotator out here and we'll explain how this works. So across the bottom of my graph. You can see these are consumption amounts, so think of this, so we're looking at a monthly bill. And we're looking at a bill uh that where the household consumes a thousand or two thousand. Or three and so on, all the way up to ten thousand, and there are households who consume much more than that. Again, uh as we said a couple of slides ago, those aren't necessarily the 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 households that we're looking at. So anybody who may be considered uh who may be struggling to pay their bills would likely be in in this range. Okay? And on the left, we've got a climbing cost amount, so twenty dollars, forty dollars, and so on. And the way these color layers work. Um so the green zone, if the if the cost of the water bill is inside the green zone, remember it's considered a low burden. If it's in the yellow zone. It's considered a mild burden, and as you get up into the red zone and higher, then that's considered a higher burden. So. If so, uh working at minimum wage. For four hours. Uh one would earn earn a gross wage of twenty-nine dollars, and that again is considered to be in the green zone. And as you work more and more hours in the month. Um you you the the amount is is taking you up through these layers from green to yellow to red. All right, so let's see what's going on with. The rates. So this black line that you see here represents the cost. Of water bill depending on how much you consume. So if you're consuming a thousand dollars in a month. Right now, your bill is around about eight eight fifty-three, eight dollars and fifty-three cents. And if you consume ten thousand dollars in a month, sorry, ten thousand gallons. In a month, then your bill is up here at just a little bit around forty forty-three dollars, forty-three, forty-four dollars. And if you consume any of these other amounts. Uh your bill will be somewhere along this black line. And so based on the affordability burden metric. Um one might interpret at this point that the the there is a low uh cost burden to the cost of water at this point. From a community perspective. All right, so let's go to the next slide. Uh.
Real quick. Real quick, just for the sake of those that are wondering, how many people this represents? I believe there's a graphic at the bottom of it, the the next um transaction here. We want to understand that the good majority of our city is consuming between zero and six thousand gallons. Per month. Okay, uh actually, the number is seventy-nine percent, and you'll see that in just a second. There you go. Seventy-nine percent, so four thousand five hundred forty-four out of the five thousand seven hundred thirty-three accounts. Are using between really zero and six thousand, but those are the categories. I were talking about, so a good majority of our. Um residents fall within those lines. Go ahead, JP.
Yeah, so this is a new graph, and what's different with this one is that rather than having uh consumption amounts on the bottom. Now we're looking at what happens if you increase your rates. And there's two different lines here, so we're looking at. A household that would be consuming a thousand gallons in a month. Now that might be a uh one one person living alone. And then you might have a a household consuming six thousand gallons in a month, and that could be a family of four who are, you know, using. Water frugally, uh but because there's more people in the household, they're consuming more water. So we're looking at what happens to these two bills as. Um if rates were to increase by these amounts, and you can see that. Um it's not until you get to about a fifty percent rate increase. Uh to a water bill that it begins to, so the six thousand gallon. Uh consumer begins to cross into the yellow zone, so it begins to look like. Uh perhaps a mild cost burden to that household. Uh and then. You know, higher rate increases, obviously, you know, the curves keep going higher and higher as as we look at what happens if. And as was just pointed out, so the uh important thing to understand is that seventy-nine percent of the. Um of the accounts are consuming water uh between these black lines. Uh ma- maybe I'll pause a moment in case there's questions, or should we carry on?
Moving so far.
Council, do you have any questions so far?
Great. Uh as we continue to go through the plan, I also wanted to note uh here. Um as staff is here, President, we have our Public Works Director, Mr. Rick Saylor, who. Played a role in this, and also Ms. Venetia Henderson and the entire finance team. That uh provided much-needed data for us to put this together. To that point, uh when we talk about affordability, before we leave this section, go on to the next. I want you to equate to the fact that if we've been collecting on average two point five million dollars per year. Over the course of the last four years, that equates to roughly ten million dollars in revenue. That has come in to cover our expenses with. And in those same four years, um Ms. Venetia, correct me if I'm wrong. Current date, current to date right now, we have roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of. Whether it's late or pending payments or what have you that are falling behind. So what that equates is about one point five percent of our. Net, uh excuse me, not at our gross revenue that has come in. So I want to keep that into relation just to how much of the population that equates to. Everybody understands those that are in that burden that are falling behind in that burdened uh state. Next slide, please. So what are the next steps? We need to explore some type of assistance programs to help some of the individuals, households that are struggling with to pay their bills. Uh and also recalibrate the our race structure to make sure we meet our growing needs, but more importantly, so we break even. All right, that's something that we are running at a deficit. What happens when we fall below the break-even point? Is we rely, we then start to rely on general fund. To offset that expense, so now you're talking, you're putting that burden on property taxpayers to pay for. With your utility, or in this case, your enterprise fund, which is not what it's intended to do. And would be completely the contrary of what FPT was asking us to do, which is to make everything more user-friendly. So in line with that, we we uh. Are moving forward with our suggestions. Next slide, please. All right, let's talk about briefly about capital improvement. So you, the next slide, you'll see a map that 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 exists of the city. And it talks about all the different zones. Those of you that came to the capital improvement meetings know that the city has been subdivided into about fifteen zones. The essentially the worst eight zones are the ones that are identified here within in this next slide, so you see a general idea. You're talking about pretty much everything uh east of uh forty-five, essentially. Uh is considered some of the weaker zones, so based on a study that was done by a city ba- based back to twenty sixteen. We identified these to be the worst uh zones. Next slide. So we talked about capital improvement. One of the suggestions I was given. Uh was that we try to find other forms of income wherever any which way to try to address some of these issues that we're having in these zones. We identified seven and eight to be the two two worst zones. Thankfully, we're up for uh roughly four million dollars from mid-mod funds. That uh when we had our meeting and when we had the public input, it was recommended that we use those funds. To address Area Seven, which has been deemed the worst so far with fourteen priority one leaks. Uh we also, through our ARPA survey, we still haven't come to the recommendations to council for review. We uh earmarked up to from one to one point five million dollars towards uh waterline repairs, and if such, the second worst would be Area Eight. Um that we would like to potentially present those to council for review to recommend some of those improvements be made there. The other six that would be were deemed the worst. Uh have been spread out for the sake of this table, not that we're necessarily making this recommendation, we could always spread it out. Or move it or shift it in which way, but they roughly one through three total approximately five point four in today's dollars. And uh areas four through six, roughly eight million dollars worth of repairs is what's estimated in 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 today's dollars. Please keep in mind, the study was done in twenty sixteen. So we have um curtailed those numbers to try to represent. That difference, and that's where these numbers have uh uh been presented forward. If for whatever reason, we're able to get Area Seven completed for less funds. We would tap into Area Six, which was deemed one of the worst ones as well, and that's right next to it as well. And also dating back to twenty eighteen, that's one of the areas that the city has already started doing some cap improvement. In the waterline area where they did three and a half streets already in in Area Six. Next slide, please. So here we've identified where we would go and what those forms of payment would be should we proceed accordingly. We would use the three point nine from MIT mod and the one point three from ARPA. And it leaves us areas one through six, which essentially in this case, should we move forward, we would try to use borrowed funds in that case to get them done. And we're gonna come back to you on our plan to pay back for those borrowed funds in a second. But I wanted to say that there are many forms of borrowed funds. And we're not implying anything today by how we're gonna go that route. But we're presenting that plan because of the needs and the request from the community to address our water line as the first and most important part of what we do. In doing so, we've identified that that needs to be where our priorities set for our capital improvements at this time. Also, of all the different methods of going after it, obviously grants are probably the most uh friendly. But second arguably more friendly with them would be applying for state revolving funds. The fact that areas one through six, most of them fall in the LMI, would would uh. Would allow us the opportunity to have a greater majority of those funds reimbursed, or in this case forgiven. So for example, if we were to take a loan of those two areas combined at roughly thirteen to fourteen million, our hopes would be a good majority of those funds would be forgiven. So please keep that in mind. That's why we're recommending that now and want to do so before our LMI changes whenever the next census track is uh. Is a shared. Next slide, please. So now let's get into. The actual table. We've made some updates to the table since we last met uh with the community with their recommendations. Uh their recommendations are highlighted in different colors, so this is very important. So we talked about a recommendation that was made by a resident that we should use other forms of income. Uh or or revenue, if you will, or funds to start the capital improvements, okay? The next thing we talked about doing was. Uh trying to see we could charge close to a penny per gallon. Right, in the current state right now, the one thousand gallon users are roughly at one point six. And as you notice, the rest of the different categories going down, it 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 slightly drops to right at about a penny or slightly under a penny. So we kept true to that recommendation by a resident that was made to also introduce what they called the penny plan. They had said go up to two pennies. Per gallon, but luckily we're gonna stay below that. In addition to that, I wanted to note the bottom of this as well is the total account per tier. Right now, these are for R one residential, we have five thousand seven hundred and thirty-three accounts in this area, and you'll notice nine hundred and fifty-three of them. Are one thousand gallon users. Seven hundred ninety-two fall into two thousand gallon users per month, three in the nine twenty-seven and five. Uh are either four or five thousand gallon per month users. So please keep that in mind as we're progressing through this. Now let's talk about the two lines that are listed in uh orange. And then let's talk about the one in light blue. And then the stormwater, so. In 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 my short tenure here and Rick's short tenure here, Ms. Venetia, who used to work in public works. We know that a good majority of the calls that we get for service revolve around leaks or waterline repair. Right? And there's also the fact that folks are asking about stormwater drainage ditch work. Anything towards that nature. So I want to go back to what the charge that was given to us that we need to address in our capital improvements in general when it came to water. Please, one, address our water quality, right? Two, address water loss and make sure that everybody has safe access to water, especially in case of a fire or eh or any other form. And three, was to address our pressure. But we know we cannot address the pressure until we get our water lines fixed, so that's gonna be a little bit further down the line. To do so, we need either form of pumps to be used in certain areas as was recommended for us to look into. Or uh in forms of another uh uh much higher water tower or a different water tower for us to have to address some of our pressure issues. So that one is down the line, but there is a correlation with fixing our two-inch water lines. And that and how it would address how we would be able to affect our actual leaks. In line with that, too, is the addition of our um. Uh citizen portal, which would give residents an access to on their phone or on their computer to assess how their water is going. Similar to how folks have access to see what their kilowatt usage is. Is that fee would 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 go, the twenty cents per month per household would go towards paying for for that ability to do that as well. And lastly, the stormwater fee would address some of those issues that we talked about. Uh per month in this case to address some of the ditch work that we wanted to do. We know that uh prior to the rollback, there there was a uh a group of funds that was listed for there to be a stormwater crew. That would work on stormwater uh concerns, including blowing out culverts and helping with some of the deeper ditches. And to address some of our uh stormwater concerns throughout the city. That's where that would equate to as far as where that would go forward. Now, I want to also say that part of what the ordinance is that's listed tonight does not include this utility capital improvements. It does not include the citizen portal, and it does not include the actual stormwater fee, but we also felt the need to not bring things back and forth. We wanted you to understand that if we want these things addressed and the pace at which we want them addressed. That this is what one of the forms or the methods that we could use towards doing it and one that we recommend at present time. Also listed on here are some of the other uh fees that are associated, for example, the park fee is listed in there at two dollars. So a one thousand gallon user, if you look at the red line, that's what the the bill is right now. For an enterprise fund for our utilities. Another misconception, folks thought that we were gonna double people's water bill. We're not, we're not watering, we're we're not doubling people's utility bill. Okay, it's not getting doubled. Clearly, it's it's showed on here, but we are addressing some of the efficiencies that the deficiencies that we have in our three main principles, which are water. Sewer and sanitation. All right, let's touch briefly on sanitation. Right now, present time, we are charging ninety-one cents less than what we are being charged for pickup. Meaning, since September first, we're ninety-one cents in the hole per pickup per home per month. That contract was signed back in twenty fourteen with a three percent incremental increase, and we have not adjusted our rates accordingly to cover that. So that's where that number comes in. Same with sewer, as we know, consumption is sewer is driven towards that. Um we have fallen behind in that, which is why we qualified for some of these grant funds up to this day. When it comes to the uh subtotal shown, that shows all those fees, but at present time, in order to bring you back. A utility capital improvements, a citizen portal and a stormwater, we would have to do so by separate ordinances, similar to how your parks fee was done. What I believe twenty nineteen, if I'm not mistaken. All right, those would have to come back for your approval. Uh and that could be changed any which way. You can make that seven and three, you can make it eight and two, you can make it five and five, whatever, whatever decision discretion you would hold. Uh but whatever pace we put those at would control and deem how fast we can address some of these concerns. Also, if you notice part of the chart to highlight the difference of twenty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents. Prior to uh talking to uh the residents on Thursday, that. Prior to uh talking to uh the residents on Thursday, that number was actually closer to twenty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents for two reasons. One. They uh alerted that we should add a fee that's highlighted in yellow above at two dollars and twenty-five cents. And another thing that was talked about is affordability. How are we going to help those that may not be able to um have. Uh the means to afford their, their bill. One suggestion one resident made was to include a affordability donation to their bill. They said they would not mind paying an extra seven bucks or more on their bill as a donation to help those that could or could not afford more. Whatever that difference was between um whatever difference ends up being between the actual bill and up to ninety or a hundred dollars. So that would be a donation. What that would do is that would allow us a fund to help those that may or may not fall into those affordability issues. In addition to that, you'll notice in the light blue down below. That we've eliminated, we could either reduce or eliminate. What capital improvements or citizen portal or stormwater fees are available to those who are seniors. So that's also important because then that makes a difference a lot less. For example, for a senior, instead of their bill being fifty-seven forty-eight, it may go up to seventy-five fifty-one, which represents an increase of eighteen oh three. That's only if we add the two dollars and twenty-five cents. In the original part of the plan, the first thousand gallons was still included within the sixteen fifty base rate. The base rate that's shown on here uh i- is, is a standard that a few, quite a few other cities use where that is the cost of just to deliver water. That's what it costs you to deliver water. Those are what those costs are based differently from the water usage and how that kind of goes up. The scaling rate going up is also of importance because. It's always thought that you want to charge less for people that, that um that consume less. To incentivize those for environmental reasons to consume less water. That takes you through every single discipline that's on here. The real difference of what's coming to you tonight for first reading talks specifically about the rates. So that's what we're charging for water, sewer and sanitation. Obviously, C C T Y is something that was also previously adopted. So essentially, everything in white would remain. This with the adjusted rates, everything in color would be introduced at a later time if and when that that becomes available for a timeline for that. I would say I would like more time to finalize the capital improvement plan formally presented to you for adoption. If and when that's adopted, then along with that, bring to you uh ordinances to address what those needs are. And we could move those at whatever speed you want. It could be that we don't start providing those until six months from now or a year from now, whatever timeframe that would be. Allow us more time to look at that and also bring that at a later time. Maybe it's. We're going to just do the, the, the capital improvements year one and maybe come back and do the stormwater year two. But address of that will also be is at that rate is when we will be able to address some of these areas. What that means is that what I call the triangle, the, or the T P would move over a year or two years dictated as to how you would uh prefer for us to move those projects forward. Um, next slide. Yes, sir.
Ex- the, explain the two twenty-five. I don't recall that from the earlier discussion.
The two twenty-five is what one of the residents recommended, saying that there should still be a rate. Uh it was a recommendation that was taken. We as a staff did not necessarily want to recommend that, but we wanted to incorporate the voice of the resident who said that. I believe J P Kremmer from the next slide shows it without that number there. So that way it'll, it'll, it'll reflect. Uh what that would look like. So reduce the person's bill by additional two dollars and twenty-five cents for the, for that user. This in mind, I'm sorry.
I, I do have that slide elsewhere, but this is just a commercial. Uh, this is the commercial table and I've got the, I've got the older slide further down below.
I apologize. Thank you, J P. In addition to that, one of the things that was talked about, we have four hundred and seven commercial accounts. Uh some of the voice from the residents from all the different C I P meetings and water rate meetings that we've had is that would only be fair for us to not only. Increase it at the same rate, but if not more for our commercial accounts as to what the water rates would be. So this is what those rates would include. At this time for your review. Uh the only difference is in sanitation. It depends. A lot of our commercial businesses use more or less. Uh sanitation products and others, while one business may have just one tank, another one might have a larger container and so forth. So that's why that was left as a. Flush red amount because it would depend on a uh client by client basis. And the next slide, please, I think should be the uh, the bill. This is what a person's bill would look like. At the end of this, when we're all done, somebody that is paying for fifty-seven forty-eight, so you're one thousand gallon user. All right, in this current plan, we would include and in show the difference would climb to eighty-five seventy-one because we would add the affordability night donation to the actual account. So it would be an increase of twenty-eight twenty-three per month, total increase of three thirty-eight seventy-six per year. We did not originally have the annual increase on there, but one of our residents who attended the uh. The workshop also suggested that we also show what that looks like per year. Uh so that's why that's been shown. So everything in the uh yellow, except for the affordability donation, should folks want to donate to it. Obviously, it's not mandatory, just like the parks and the. Clean City donation are, are optional, would be listed as such. So that's actually looking what the bill would look like. The previous all-in-one plan is what we showed previously on Thursday. We'll just take a brief glimpse of that so you can see what originally was. The difference was a little bit milder, uh with a little bit less. It did not show the uh. It was twenty-four ninety-eight. It did not show the water. Uh, the, the, the water rate of two twenty-five per resident in the original slide for the one thousand gallon user. It also does not show that affordability donation should we want to have that. Because at the time of that presentation, we made it, we did not include it. So we want to show you a sample, what the table would look like without that, without those two components. And how it would affect every single resident all the way through.
So for purposes of today. Under your proposed all-in-one. Without all the extras. We would be, it would be sixteen fifty. On the water side.
Correct.
For this all-in-one for enterprise fund.
Correct.
And then sewer would be the twenty-three, what is that fifty-nine?
Twenty, twenty, twenty-three fifty-nine, correct.
Twenty-three fifty-nine. And it would been then be the sanitation at twenty-six?
Yes, sir.
Twenty-six.
And then everything else stays the same.
Twenty cents plus the tax. Plus the two dollars.
If one minus two dollars, correct. So essentially with the donation, the person's bill would be eighty-two forty-six for a one thousand gallon user. Versus currently they're at fifty-seven forty-eight for an increase. Uh not if you included all the capitals up, it would be an additional amount, but essentially without those, you're talking about a seventy-two dollar and twenty-six cents. So it'd go from fifty-seven forty-eight. To seventy-two twenty-six, an increase of fourteen seventy-eight for a one thousand gallon user. Um, Kremmy from uh, J P, do me a favor, highlight the light blue uh amounts. Essentially that those would be the differences there. Down below where it says price for seniors and um difference for seniors. Today, that's what we're bringing, although it just wouldn't say for seniors. It would just say for everybody at this time. I wanted also keep in mind that under this plan, in totality, when it's all said and done. Currently, our senior discount is one thousand sixty, one dollar sixty-five cents. And we have seven hundred and two senior accounts in this. Seven oh three. Thank you, Ms. Venetia. Uh we have seven hundred and three uh accounts under this new plan. When it's fully introduced, that will jump to a ten dollar. And uh twenty cent discount, not including the donation should they choose to want those, to not have to pay those as well. Or it could be as aggressive or unaggressive as uh you would prefer.
And for clarity, this is, this is a plan. For a ten-year period.
Yes, sir. The plan for a ten-year period with a uh proposed three point five increase per year should you uh approve it. Um and that would be to, to compensate for the increased uh proposed amounts that we know are going to go up. Water rate's going to go up, sanitation's going to go up and just arbitrarily all of our costs would, would go up um accordingly.
Um, is Gus here?
He's still in the back.
Can you get Gus? Caesar, I just had a couple of questions.
Certainly.
For you. And what was the other gentleman's name?
Uh JP.
JP, okay JP. We have a JB, JP. Um, so my first question is this affordability burden study that, that we saw. Does that take into consideration other increases JP? Does that take into consideration increases in our school taxes, increases in municipal taxes? Uh and other uh increases such as fuel costs and things of that particular nature, or is this just. Uh an affordability burden study that considers only uh the potential water rate increase?
Yeah, thanks for that question. Uh so, so this was. This was a, think of it as a flyover. So it was a high level analysis and it was only uh looking at water. Uh on its own. So uh to look at a, a, a number of other. Um as you're pointing out, there's, there's a lot of different parameters that would be a, a much more uh involved study and that was not done.
Okay, thank you. Second question then would be, as I drill into that. Uh, does it take into consideration those on a fixed income? I know we had a, had a great. Uh formula that talked about minimum wage and, and how many hours you would have to work uh. If you made minimum wage to pay the water increase, but my question is this, those of our residents that are on fixed incomes. If you were to, to scrapulate or break down. Uh their amount of, of income into a forty-hour work week, would they be making minimum wage? So, so does this, this uh affordability burden even, even? Take them into consideration?
So the, the study doesn't look at individual households. Uh so just to give you an example, there might be, uh you know, a single person who's, who's got a lower income and, and in their specific. Case, they may not feel a cost burden to the paying of their water bill. Uh whereas you could have another household that has a higher income, maybe a little bit higher, that has. You know, five people living in the household with only one working adult, they may, they may feel their water bill is a cost burden. And so this study did not look at individual households and analyze every household's specific circumstances. Uh so again, what you're asking, I think could, might be a, 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 a good idea of something to look deeper into. Um and I think as was shown several slides earlier. Uh you could, you know, the, the city could decide to investigate. The idea of um an assistance program, which might begin by doing a more in-depth analysis of individual households. Uh but again, that was not done at this, at this point, it, we, it, this was just a, a, a high level. Um, community level analysis to see, you know, generally where our rates compared to those metrics.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. I just wanted to, I wanted to be clear that as I move through making this decision, there are seniors in our city that are being. Uh overburdened financially, uh and that's, that's really important to me. Uh it sounds like we don't have a handle on uh what that would do to our seniors. And so again, that's just more to consider. Um, I appreciate that. Gus, I wanted to ask you, um, would it be okay if I asked Caesar, Caesar, I'm sorry. Mrs. Mrs. Garcia, if I asked Caesar. Uh about uh line items in our budget in the twenty twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget.
Uh related to water, related.
Excuse me, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. It's in the utility fund, yes.
They pull up exactly how this. Yes, a- as it relates to the utility fund, because this is speaking to utility rates is how this meeting is noticed.
Okay, so, so Caesar, you and I talked a little bit about a few of these line items and I'm in the utility fund budget. Uh, I'm looking at the expenses. Uh I'll be looking at three categories. I'll give you a chance to get there, and this is important primarily because. Uh our community, uh many of our members have questions about these increases, and I think all of these things are tied together, if that makes sense. So we want to give them as much information as possible on all of these moving parts to see if we can get to a place of resolution.
Mayor, by chance, is there a page number there? I'm trying to catch up to you as fast as I can.
It's uh, I don't have a page number with me. It's utility, but I can.
It's about two. Two, under two thirty, look about two thirty-six.
Thank you, Jeff.
Hey, Mayor, while city manager is looking at that, just point, point of information, we've got a citizen in the gallery that.
That wants a question, that wants to ask a question. Okay.
Yes, just so you know.
Okay, who's that citizen? Okay, we'll call you up in a minute, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
And Mayor, just also just some information, because your last question on the percentage. You know, based upon person's household income, uh and I've done quite a bit of work. On that, especially with people on S S I.
Yes.
Um, I think the minimum S S I payment, uh which is a disability payment.
Okay.
Is about now, it's almost eight hundred dollars. It used to be about seven hundred and something dollars. There have been some adjustments that are being made, and I'll try to get a current, but it's thereabouts. And in budgeting. And you'll, you can look this up, Google it. Usually housing expenses are about thirty percent. Utility expenses run anywhere between a range of five to ten percent is when we're looking at someone's. Income and, and, and Miss Yancy has the familiarity with this as well too, in some of these, these areas. So one thing I noted, and this is something that, uh as I was looking at the, after the initial presentation that I attended. I was looking at those. So these suggested rates, these unified rates for this enterprise fund. Does fit within that ten percent parameter in terms of utilities.
Okay, thank you.
I think I'm, I think I'm there.
So the, the, the questions that I continue to, to get surround three line items. Expenses, utility billing. The requests from, I would assume that would be Rick. Since he's the public works director, I could be wrong, Suzie, it could be anybody. But the request uh for utility billing, the twenty twenty-three request is seven hundred fifty-four dollars. And two hundred and eighty-five, seven hundred fifty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars, excuse me. Your proposal is one point two billion dollars, basically, one million, two hundred and one thousand, three hundred forty-nine dollars. That big gap, people want to understand what's happening there. Then there's a line maintenance right underneath. The uh request from the department was nine hundred thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars. And your proposal was two million, four hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred sixty-five dollars. And stormwater permitting, uh the request from the department was fifty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars. And your recommendation or your request was five hundred seventy-five thousand, four hundred ninety-seven dollars. Uh and I, I guess the, the main issue is just trying to understand. What this is about. I think it will make people feel better if they can understand what these large adjustments are about.
Certainly, Mayor, I'm looking at that now and I could have a uh better answer to that question shortly.
Okay.
I'd have to look back into my notes.
How about this? How about we, how about?
If I can have it for the six.
Yeah, yeah, we look at, if, if you have something for six o'clock, I just want to make sure that you had time to gather. Very good, very good. Uh that's all I have. J P? JB?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you for the presentation.
Okay, and thanks again for inviting me today.
Yes, sir. Any other council questions before we go open it to the uh audience?
No, sorry.
Very good.
What's good? Just want to make. Confirm, we're looking at a ten-year plan. We're looking at something that we haven't done historically in the city. Number one, and something I've always urged to do, both in terms of on our financial side. Number two, we are looking at a, a methodology for those. Who. Access all three of our services provided by an enterprise utility fund. Water, sewer and sanitation. A, a, a rate, a suggested rate that is not going to ask us. To contribute from our reserves anymore. And in those same sheets, Mary, you may recall, you saw where. We, we've taken from our reserves from, from twenty-one to twenty-two. So a substantial amount because of, um, part of it was a recall and our lower, our new adjusted tax rate property. Uh, so we've taken that. And, uh, and I'm accurate in saying that, correct, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then, um. We're also addressing those individuals that do not access. The, the water itself, perhaps. But they might access other, other of the services that are provided by our enterprise fund.
Right.
And, and it provides us a blueprint over that ten-year period. In, in terms of adjustments that may occur. So we're not going to have divisive discussions. As a council that, you know, we have set forth the plan here as long as we follow it. And, um. And then, and I don't think I saw this one, but you did talk about it at the earlier presentation. For the rates that are charged for those individuals, and I don't know how many they are. Uh, Ms. Rose, you may remember others that were there. Uh, we have a, a higher rate. That would be charged for individuals that are accessing our services that are not within the city of Lamar.
Yes, sir.
Correct?
That is right, one point five times the amount.
One point five.
So one and a half times.
Okay, that, though, I just want to clarify that.
And then to that point, yes, there are several residents of the city who do not utilize water services from us. Uh, so those would also obviously not have to pay that rate. This would only be for our current users. For example, we have more folks that use sanitation, but less that use water. That's why there's a discrepancy in the amount of accounts. You'll, you'll hear still the number of seven thousand accounts out there. Well, that's because that's inclusive of sanitation and those services. However. On the water side, we, you know, our, our one accounts accounts about five thousand, seven hundred, give or take. And, and commercial about approximately four hundred and seven, if I remember correctly from the presentation.
Okay. Okay, uh, ma'am, you may approach. Uh, it is custom to welcome, it's custom to give you full name and your address before you speak.
So my name's Cassandra Lafferty. I live at thirteen oh two Ross Street in Lamar, of course. Um, I have a couple of questions about the slideshow.
Yes, ma'am.
And about just the numbers. Um, the first question I had was in the first, I guess, second slide, I believe.
Tippy, could you pull up the slide real quick, the, the slideshow, if you don't mind?
Counting my three minutes?
No, no.
No, 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 yeah, you're fine. This is a workshop, so you don't have three minutes.
Good, because I have a couple of slides I wanted to.
Yes, ma'am, you're fine, you're fine.
Uh, which, which slide?
I believe that was the second or third slide. Um, of the graph of, of the usage compared to, uh, the purchased.
Would have been the two tones of blue. I believe it's slide three or four.
Okay, uh, am I sharing my screen here?
Um, no, sir, not at the moment.
I'm sorry.
So, I, I'm just making sure that I'm reading this correctly. So our expenses and what we're using correct is in the light blue. What we're purchasing is in the dark blue, correct? So we're not exceeding that at the moment, correct?
We, we are, actually. So at present time right now. It is costing us roughly five million dollars to operate our, our actual utility water side.
Right, but in this graph, it's showing that our operating expenses aren't going over our purchasing expenses. Now, my question is.
Okay.
For this, and you talked about our sewer leaks earlier, right? Our water leaks and what needed to be fixed. How much of this graph is the water leak? Like, how many gallons are we losing each day? Compared to what people are using? Like, do we need an increase in the tax increase? If we weren't losing as much water every day, would that projected purchase, would that graph look differently? That is, that is my question.
May I answer that? That's where those zones that we talked about with the capital improvement roughly right now, and Rick, correct me if I'm wrong, the latest number, we're, we're below sixty percent water loss. So to answer your question, our, our goal is to get within realistically fifteen to twenty.
Okay.
So that's how much.
Do you know how many gallons we are losing to those leaks daily, weekly, monthly?
I could, I could give you a, a, I guess, as to what our total amount that we're being billed for versus what we're charging for through the meters. Yes, I can have that. We did that in a previous presentation. But to answer your question, the plan and the hopes for the ten-year plan is that within ten years, if we're able to do so, then our loss would be lower. And then thus, the, the shaded, the darker shade of blue up there would diminish.
I can, I, I completely understand that. But over ten years, how much water are we losing if we're not getting it repaired quickly? Is, is the, is a question. Like, we're, we're willing to charge our citizens more and increase that. When, is it a simple, let's fix the problem that we have now and not increase these taxes so much? Because you did say that you weren't going to double our, our, um, water bill, correct? But it is going to chart, go up fifty percent. And like we, like he had discussed. Compliment, compliment, is that correct?
True.
Come beyond, I'm sorry. Um, we do have fixed income. So for the sake of this argument, let's say that a person makes. A thousand dollars a month on a fixed income and their yearly is twelve thousand, correct? If their water bill from your numbers is for one person will save around seventy-five dollars. That's more than ten percent if you include the other utilities. If you only include water, then yes, it's, we're looking at ten percent. But if we include other utilities, then we're looking at just an utility cost. Thirty to forty percent of what a person is making in a year, right? So I think that there are other ways to go about this. Um, with, with not increasing, especially by what we're looking at, you know, fifty percent increase. That, that's just a high number for me when I think that repairing something that is already damaged. Is a better way of looking at it.
Correct, and that's a great argument to make. Unfortunately, historically, we haven't had the funds and the wherewithal to make those repairs. And that's, and, and I guess that's where the, the tough part has been, uh, that, that's, that's, that's where the toughest challenge has been for us, is fixing. While we're using, right? If we could shut all the water off. And then go fix the problems, then it'd be different because obviously our, our, the shaded blue amount would go to zero while you fixed it. And then eventually the operating and the shaded blue would be lower.
I mean, I'm just looking at this graph and it doesn't show that the light blue is above the dark blue. You're saying that it does, but.
No, 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 this is actually, both of these are expenses. So I, I want to make sure I clearly. That light blue is what it costs us without a single drop of water going to any service person. It costs us that much. That is your repairs and what have you. The darker, the, the light blue.
The light blue, I'm sorry.
The darker blue is every single bit of water that we purchase. So both of these combined account to what the total amount of expenses.
Okay, so both of these are the total. So are we going over that is the question?
In. No, we're under. Oh, are you? Well, here's the problem. So that's how much it costs us, five point two million.
Correct.
But we're only bringing in two point five to two point seven.
Correct, but how much are we losing from the broken pipes and from the sewer situations?
Rough, rough math, I would say half of the blue.
You would say roughly around.
Roughly half of the dark blue. So instead of it being.
Two, one point two five million, you're saying.
I would say it's, I mean, just using rough sheer math, I would say probably a million dollars less per year.
But what, but what we're talking about today is passing that million dollars on to the citizens instead of. Just repairing what's already. I mean, do you, what, do you, do you, do you guys understand what I'm saying here? Exactly.
Well.
Like, we're, we're going to end up damaging more people in our community from this tax raise. And from all of these things, and then we're going to have people moving out of our community, or we're going to have all these other ripple effects that happen from raising taxes. Or raising water.
Fees.
Raising fees.
Not, not taxes, raising fees, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
We end up hurting our community. Our community is already hurting right now, like this community, other communities. It's not just us that's hurting. It's everyone, like the entire country, the entire world is hurting right now.
Yeah.
When you ask somebody to pay fifty percent more, our grocery bills have already gone up two hundred percent more. So now you're asking me to pay another fifty percent more on my water bill. Then I stop going and supporting local businesses because I don't have the money to do that. And then local businesses go down. And then.
Yeah.
All of these other things go down from that. So that's why I'm saying, let's focus on, maybe focus on the small repairs. I know, I, in my own neighborhood, there's been a small repair for two years that's been leaking. Every time I walk my dog, I see the little water puddle. And it's probably not that big of a job, like. Let's focus on those little things so we're not losing the little amount of water. That will probably bring our pressure up a little bit. I just think there's got to be another plan and I don't see enough people here. Um, so, I don't know, that's just my personal opinion.
I would just say, we've been at this with several different public meetings for about, give or take, six months. We have had several opportunities for that, number one. Number two. Please, if I'd be remiss before you leave, if you don't see our public works director, so we can find out which street you're talking about that puddle is just on. So we can make sure we have a work order on it. But also to that extent, as far as where, where we're headed, I guess, and, 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 and the most important part. Is traditionally in the past, we've always been at two point five, right? We've always been short two point five. The problem is, is in the past, the general fund, so essentially the city is separated into two. There's the general fund and then the utility fund. So every year, the utility fund has been short increasingly going to two, two, now it's projected to be two point five. And then the other side has had to kind of help pay for that.
How many years have we had these leaks?
I.
Too long, that's a problem.
And so that's where a lot of that money is coming from.
Right.
Those, those leaks and those other utility things, that's why we're dipping in.
This, this is the issue. Water is going up across the state, period.
Oh, I completely.
Regardless, everything's going up. Everything is going up, including water. And what the problem has been is that we have been too low. Right? In our water rate, in, in, in the midst of having leaks. So what do we do? Do we can, do we pass this on to our children? Do we pass this on to our grandchildren? Or do we begin to try to slowly, as best way we can accommodate? I have a swimming pool. I feel you. My, why, why my water bill is gonna go up too.
Well, you have the luxury of having a swimming pool. I have the luxury of filling up a pool.
No, but my, but I'm serious. I don't want to pay four hundred dollars a month. I can't afford that either. All right, so let, let's be clear. That's, that's, that's what we have in common. However, our city has piss-poor pipes.
Absolutely.
So what do we do? Now, we, there was a time we talked about CO bonds. But we had a group of citizens that did not want us to do that, right?
I'm not familiar with CO bonds.
That have to pay for that. And so there's different tools that we could use to do it. Am I right, council?
Certificate of Obligation is, is basically where the council issues debt to repair, uh, to do capital improvements, basically, is what she's referring to.
So, so, so we've had those discussions. But the problem is, we have a problem, we're gonna try to solve it.
Right.
Now, what, what we are doing is we're hardly, we're looking for grants to help families. Cause my mother lives with me and she's elderly. So I'm looking for grants to do what I can help her do, us do.
Right.
Um, and, and unfortunately, I think this is the best plan because we've looked at it, we've turned it up like a, like a pancake. And it's, it's gonna be a tight squeeze because of our infrastructure. Now, we're, we're fixing it slowly, but sure, surely. But if you have a better plan. If anybody else, I mean, Joe and I, we've gone to the HAC looking for grants and all of that.
I apologize, this is my first meeting. And a lot of these meetings are held. I work a nine to five, so a lot of these meetings are held. And I understand that, you know, y'all work nine to fives and coming and having those after-hour meetings may be hard, but. A lot of our community is working.
Right.
You know, I could tell you to probably five other people that would be here right now if they weren't at work.
Why?
You know, I got off early and just so happened to be told, hey, there's a meeting today. It's not known, like, it's not put on your Facebook, it's not put on, you know, it may be on the Lamarck website. But let's be honest, how often do we go to Lamarck website when we're busy with our own lives? I can tell you, most people go on Facebook and Lamarck. And so if you put it on your Lamarck Facebook, I can guarantee you, you probably have more people.
No, your claim's legitimate. Every citizen across the state are saying the exact same thing you're saying. But the top three things that are going to be in the state legislature is going to be what? Education, water and energy, because it is going up. The problem with that, with, with, with our cities that we, we've got to do something now about our infrastructure. So what tool do we use? To do that. And I think the ones that we, the options that we have today are probably the best that doesn't bite so hard.
And, 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 and kind of going back to that point, we talked about the deficit and whatnot. Another thing to the legality of it, right? So recently, there was a, uh, what's called a rollback election. And residents in line with, um, a, a, a certain bill, SB two, have moved the model to not rely on your general fund. So that side that was borrowing, so for years, we've reduced that shortage and not increased rates. And taken it from that general fund side. However, there's a new piece of legislation, SB two. That moves it more that it needs to be covered to a user-based model because property taxpayers have said, hey, we shouldn't have to. Offset that burden of the users, in this case of what the cost is. So that's what's put us in this predicament that we are today. Because if we continue to do so, you're going to be met with opposition from the other side, possibly from the general fund side that say, well, wait a minute, why are you increasing my taxes? To help cover those expenses. And that's kind of, if, if, and if, and if I'm speaking out of turn for anybody, that's kind of where our challenge has been, is trying to satisfy all sides.
But what happens when the repairs are fixed and then we're still paying the extra? Because you're saying that we're paying the extra to get the repairs fixed, correct? So what happens when those repairs are fixed? We're still continuing to pay the extra.
Actually, I take that back. Please, and I want to clarify that. JP, can you go back a slide? To, to, to this, this slide, this is not to fix any additional repairs above our regular. Hey, I have a problem with this piece of pipe right here. Our problem is, is our entire pipes are done. So when Public Works goes out there and repairs this ten, twenty, thirty foot piece of line. Then the, the leak comes, happens further down the line. We have roughly eighty-five thousand feet. To, to ninety-five thousand feet of pipe that we need to repair in order to make the problem go away. This part, the actual rate increase is only getting us to the break-even point. This is only getting us to the plan, what you're saying, that just lets us keep doing what we're doing. This does not include the capital improvements.
So even this ten-year plan isn't a full-on fix?
Part of the, part of what's shown on there, those other colored lines. JP, go to the slide that shows the table.
You know, let, let me say this. We have a citizen. In front of us who is hurting. Who represents an entire group of our constituency that are hurting. And we are, we're ramming a plan down our throat.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, ma'am.
It doesn't, we can have a nice plan, a tidy plan, a good-looking plan. It can be a fabulous plan. But if the people can't pay their bills, it doesn't matter what kind of plan we have.
Thank you, Mayor.
It doesn't matter. Stop ramming a plan down people's throat. Let's just answer the questions. And get to the meeting. Please, can we do that?
Cause if we.
She has concerns. Let's hear her concerns. Go ahead, ma'am.
As a resident, you know, I fall under the five thousand mark, the five K mark. So as a resident, I'm paying around eighty-three dollars of, a month and. If, if I'm paying, if I make ten dollars an hour, that's eight hours of my, of my pay right there. And if I'm working forty hours times four, four weeks in a month, then that's one. One sixty, sorry, I had to do that now. If I'm, if I'm doing a hundred and sixty hours, that's ten percent. Almost ten percent of my, of my work for the month. That's just going to my water. Now, but if it raises up to one, what is it gonna be? Uh, one fourteen? That's four more hours of my work week. No, I'm not saying that I make ten dollars an hour, but I'm just saying that's if somebody is making ten, which the minimum wage is seven twenty-five, so we're not even making that. I'm just thinking that if we do this and we raise people's water bill by fifty percent. The community will hurt. We will not be able to go out to eat. We won't be able to support our local businesses. We'll end up finding people to watch our kids, daycares, community centers, like all of these will struggle. All of this will struggle. For fifty percent raise. So if we could, I mean, if there's a way to cut it down maybe a little bit more where we can please both sides. I think you would have more citizens, especially low-income citizens, who are struggling, who would be on board with it. That's all I'm saying.
Absolutely, ma'am, and I'm sorry, Mayor, or, or ma'am, for you, if any which way. We're just trying to let you know, uh, to, to, as, as was suggested, to, to let you know what the plan actually entails. So from the slide that's shown, the six dollars under utility capital improvements specifically talks to those permanent repairs.
Correct.
That's what that specifically, so of that increase, in your case, if you're a five thousand gallon user. That increase, uh, forty-one oh four of that six dollars would go towards. that increase, uh, forty-one oh four of that six dollars would go towards fixing, towards that permanent fix, towards getting us there, right? We have roughly, I believe, in our total plan, about twenty-five million dollars worth of repairs. Obviously, at six dollars per month per resident, it's not going to get us all the way there. It's just as, as far as starting a plan to get it done.
I completely understand the.
And I apologize.
But I, I just am speaking for the people and for the citizens of this community and that we are already struggling with everything else. I don't think that this is an appropriate time for this action. Or that maybe we can come back with a, a better plan, a more minimized plan for the increase. Because, like I said, we have a lot of low income families here in Lamarck. You know, that is a majority of, of us are low income families. Um, I am, am a low income family, so I will see this fifty percent increase as a lot, you know. It for me, I mean, I'll be honest, for right now, it's a struggle to even keep utilities on and want work, you know, now I'm having to work sixty hours a week or take care of my son. So it's like, it's, it's already, I would have to end up working more hours. People would have to end up working more hours. And people that are on fixed incomes, they, they don't have that option. They can't just work a couple of extra hours to make that increase, so. Sorry.
We want to thank you for being, for coming out in the rain, for adjusting your schedule and for making your voice heard. We hear you.
I would love to come to more of these meetings.
And I would love for you to serve on some committees.
Love to serve. I actually have been president of the psychology club before.
There you go. I think Ms. Nance wants to get your, your full name and address.
And also, if we could also have your information in the back, so we can address that leak, if we're not already having an emergency, thank you.
Now, uh, Mr. Mayor, she brings up a good point. Um, Baker Ripley, who is one of the, the nonprofit groups, and Joe knows about this, they are ten weeks in the hole with providing utility assistance in the area. So much so that, uh, we're looking for other help. We get calls quite frequently for families that are looking, uh, for rental and utility help.
How many months back is that?
Ten weeks.
Ten, ten weeks.
They're ten weeks behind with helping families make their.
Mr. Osteen, did you want to? Have you been here yet this, today?
James Osteen, twenty twelve, Giordano, Lamarck, Texas. Thank you, thank you, mayor. You know, uh, Joe said it, this is gonna go on, wanted to get it confirmed for ten years. But that's just that zone, isn't it? Or is this for all the zones on the repairs?
Again, we would move at the pace deemed necessary or available by whatever action council chooses to take. Okay, so we would, we would, we reevaluate it in ten years. Our dream would be to get them all fixed in ten years.
Yeah.
But that will be dependent on what pace everybody.
Right, now the five, five point something million, is that, is that going to take care of all the seven, eight zones?
No, sir.
That's what I'm, I'm saying, it's not going to take care of all the zones.
No, zones, uh, one through six alone. Uh, if we go back to the slide, I believe, I think you just passed it, JP, the slide that shows that. There you go. So zone seven alone is about almost four million dollars. Just for area seven, we have fifteen areas.
Yeah.
So areas one through three is five, roughly five point four. And areas four through six is roughly eight million.
Right, I guess what I want to know, and so everybody understands this, this increase will be going over ten years in order to pay for all the zones. Is that, is that, is that a safe statement?
If we were to approve the capital improvement portion, see, that portion that's up there is not even before tonight as far as ordinance. We want to explain. People are going to ask, well, what are we getting for the increase?
Yeah.
Well, the first part of the, the, the actual rate analysis is just to get us to break even.
Yeah.
And that, and that's where we're, that's, that's, that's where we're struggling the most.
Yeah.
It's just to break even.
Yeah.
The capital improvement component, which we wouldn't.
It's a whole nother ballgame.
That's to fix the line, and that's a totally separate, totally separate.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I just want to make sure everybody was clear on that.
Go ahead, Jim.
To follow up on on, on both comments. And, uh, the the presentation today and you, and you and I talked about, we were, I'll tell you what we talked about, right? We're focusing just on three items. The water, the sanitation and the sewer. Wow, who's that? I got it. I'm, I'm sorry, I, I'm distracted with our police chief there.
Chief, it's twenty twenty-two, sir.
Yeah, I love it, I love it.
Yes, sir. Not eighteen twenty-two.
But, um, it's not often people stop me in the conversation. You did that. So going back, the, the, um, we're, we're focusing on a ten year plan to, to recognizing, uh, just to follow up, and you're very right on this because I brought it up, uh, January, I'm going to be a sixty year, yeah, the young lady, a sixty year resident of this community. As long as I've been here, we've had water leaks, okay? Mr. Osteen knows this, been on council, Mr. Mission knows this, right, Mr. Mission, we've had the water leaks. At, well, and that, and they go hand in hand, right? They go hand in hand. What, what we've, what we have, and realistically, and I'm, I'm not going to blame anybody, it's just a, a fact. We've been very reluctant to address that because we've been comfortable knowing that we've been able to at least pay for our water. And the deficits, the deficits have been taken from our reserves to pay, to pay for that. And, uh, now, what council did earlier and and I, I was not part of, I, it's, it's all of us, it's all of us, I'm not even going to go to that, but it's all of us. We opted to increase the amount of water that we need as a city to take care of our future demands. Okay, and that came at a cost. So we increased, that's the, the numbers of that graph that the city manager presented. The, the, the plan here is that we historically, as a city, at least I'm talking myself, we historically uh, don't follow through on financial planning to, to lay out, here's, here's what you can expect in terms of budgets and things of this nature, right? What we do is, is, uh, uh, next month, we're going to deal with the fact that our sanitation agreement has going to be an increase, and we've got to now figure out how to, how to handle that. And so we'll get involved in a, in a big community discussion, maybe even people get hurt by some of the words, you don't disagree, you don't agree with me, and, um, and I don't like that, period, right? Um, and then we, then we'll have a discussion on our sanitation rate. Uh, that, the sewer, because the sewer, believing that it has leaks as well too. Okay, we, we, we know, we know that as well too, right? And so, so the city manager was tasked and I, and I'm thankful for him for doing this because none has, has ever endeavored this, is to say, let's see if we can present a plan. And that's what he's doing, just presenting a plan based upon input on how we can address all of these issues at perhaps one time in the earlier discussions that, that you, because of your commitments. But in the earlier discussions, he did say we could do it all at once. We could do it gradually, and that's now what ultimately later on in our meeting, we're going to be discussing, right? So this is a proposal. Uh, I recognize, uh, that, that, that we are all financially challenged in some fashion. Um, I like to say that I've, I've never been, I don't think I've in my life, but I have to say this quite frankly, I don't think I've ever been poor, but I've been broke in my life. Right? And all that, so we are all challenged in, 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 in our life at some, at some point. And, um, uh, but I, I don't want to assume that everybody is in my financial position as well. And so that's the other obligation and the, and the, the discussion that, that we all have to put into this. But I think ultimately, we're going to come up, knowing this council, knowing all of us working together, we'll come up with a fair method that will permit us to secure a financial stability with regard to our obligations. And then also say, let's follow through then with the further discussions so that we can then deal with the leaky pipes, uh, the water pipes, reduce the lost water. Because ideally, as, as the city manager has mentioned, our goal is to have no more than twenty percent water loss. The standard actually is ten percent. I don't know if we'll ever get to that, but, but that's very rare. That's ideal, the ten percent uh, in terms of water loss. And, um, and so I appreciate, that's all I needed to say on that side.
Uh, the only thing I have to say is, I appreciate you coming up and speaking. Um, I'm in the same boat as you. I mean, I'm the five thousand gallon user too, so on a fixed income, so, um, just, we could just got a plan better with our money, so, um, but we're trying to fix problems from way back in the day. That's all we're trying to do. And trying to make it reasonable. And this plan, honestly, with the new updates that the city manager gave me or presented is great. I like how a citizen said, hey, let's put in a, put in a, um, affordability, yeah, and affordability. I mean, that's great, that's a great idea because citizens are helping citizens, so. But I just want to say thank you for coming up, making your voice heard.
Again, any other questions? Any final comments from council?
No, I just want to, I just think, you know, when we talk about water pressure, that was one of the reasons why I moved away from Lamarck back in nineteen ninety-seven because of the horrible pipes, uh, where I lived off of Hoover. And I wasn't accustomed to that. And so in, in order for us to, um, be intelligent citizens, who sometimes we have to make hard choices, I am so grateful though for residents like you and the committee that met. Uh, because now we're, we're trying to take some responsibility to try to fix it. Whatever decision I make, I always think about children. Whatever decision, um, that I make in life and business, always think about how does it impact the youth. And for a long time, um, we've kind of kicked the can down the road in, in this city. And so, uh, part of our growing pains is that we're getting more people now that are trying to provide solutions, but, um, please, please, please pray for our state legislatures, because this is, is going to be a hot topic about water, because a lot of communities, just like Lamarck, are having the same issues where the pay, your, your cost of living is going up, but the pays aren't, but the utilities are out the wazooed. Right? And so, so I encourage you to, to write as well to our state legislatures who have a direct impact on this, a more direct impact in some ways than we do, so. But thank you so much for your time, mayor. Thanks for allowing us to, and Caesar, thank you for all of your hard work. I know this has been like a sixty day plus process trying to, uh, take some accountability for what we see trying to fix, uh, what's in our city.
Very good. If there's nothing further, again, we want to thank you all for coming out. We want to thank you staff members for staying late. Uh, we want to thank, thank you all for every comment that you have made, every question you've posed. Uh, as we deliberate on this item in the regular meeting, uh, we take all of these comments with us. And again, we want to thank uh, Mr. Garcia and his staff and JP, uh, for putting these documents together. There's nothing further. Uh, we will, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn. We will reconvene in about five minutes. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
The second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, you stand adjourned.